I'll go ahead and call to order the council committee work session for November the 12th, 2013. There are three agenda items that we will be discussing this evening. The first will be a brief Kohani potential annexation area update, followed by cost recovery and development services, and finally Agenda Bill 6737, a resolution regarding funding commitment to east side fire and rescue. With that brief introduction, I will now turn to our finance director, Diane Markot, for the Kohani potential annexation area update.
Well, good evening to all. I just wanted to spend a few minutes of time and brief the council on the status of the Kohani potential annexation. There was a meeting held on November the 6th by the Washington State Boundary Review Board for King County, and at that meeting, they unanimously approved with one abstention the City of Issaquah's application for the potential annexation area called Kohani. They then sent out their resolution indicating they have to go through a very deliberative process and do an assessment and a comparison of many components as they are identified in the Growth Management Act. And I'd like to just take a couple of moments and read a couple of sections. It says in the report, it says, "The evidence demonstrates that the City of Issaquah is able to provide and sustain public services, infrastructure, and facilities to the Kohani area." They further went on to show that the city has sufficient municipal resources to ensure necessary funds to serve the area in a manner that will address impacts on costs, adequacy of services, finance, debt structure, or rights of other governmental units. The city has developed a basic plan to sustain levels of service at a reasonable rate to all citizens. And then the last piece is, "Evidence and the record supports that the approval of the annexation of the Kohani area to Issaquah, including the fact that the territory proposed for annexation is contiguous to the city. The socioeconomic profile of the area population is similar to the socioeconomic profile of the citizens of the City of Issaquah." So this is just an example of whereby the board had to go through and review how we would work as compared to the Kohani annexation. You know, so what is now the next step? As of November the 6th, we are now in a 30-day waiting period to see if there will be any challenges. That waiting period ends on December the 6th, and then we have another briefing to the council on December the 9th. And that update would be to advise the council if there were any potential actions, or if there were no actions, then what the next steps would be for the council consideration. City Administrator Bob Harrison had attended the public meeting, and I just, you know, wanted to allow him a couple of comments about, the closing comments from the board. And with that, we'd be happy to indicate any questions.
No, thanks. Actually, the mayor and I attended, and it was very nice. They essentially made their conclusions, but they made a couple of comments to the city that I thought were worth passing on. One was, one of the members stated that, in all the years that he had served on the board, which were several.
Bob, is your mic on? Or if you could pull it just a little bit closer.
There we go. One of the members indicated that the city's presentation was the best presentation that he had seen in front of the Boundary Review Board, and the application was the most complete that they had seen in front of the Boundary Review Board. And another Boundary Review Board member passed along that they really felt that the city handled the entire process with real dignity. So it was, I think the mayor felt very good about how we presented that, and I just want to credit, you know, all the team members that were involved in doing that presentation and staff.
And are there any questions for either Bob or Diane? Great. Well, thank you for those very, very positive comment. And Stacy?
I had a question about the next step. You said that there's the 30-day waiting period, and then there's an update to council, and then what?
Well, depending on what the outcome is of the 30-day period, if we end up with a challenge, then we'll be going to Superior Court, and then we would be providing some information to council on that challenge. If there is no challenge, we would be coming before the council on the 9th, and I believe the date, the next council meeting would be December the 16th. And at that point in time, we would be bringing forward in ordinance calling for the election on February the 11th, backtracking to November.
And are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, then, moving to our next topic. This is a continuation of Agenda Bill 6668 dated 17 June 2013. And for some brief introductory comments, I'll turn to the Chair of Land and Services, Stacy Goodman.
Thanks. So this has been before Land and Shore for, since the, I don't know, maybe July. And it's a fairly large topic. And one of the reasons that it's before a work session is because during the months that the fees were before Land and Shore, we had a couple of council members rotate in and out because of members couldn't be at the meeting, and it was fairly apparent that there were some varying, wide varying points of view on the fees and the recovery and the amount of time we might take to ramp up fees if we were to increase them. And so it seemed a prudent decision to bring it before the council so that the staff could have some idea of how the entire council felt about the topic. And so here we are tonight. Charlie's going to lead us off with a presentation.
So Charlie Bush, Deputy City Administrator, for the presentation.
Thank you very much, members of the council. This relates to Agenda Bill 6668, which is currently in Land and Shore. And as Councilmember Goodman mentioned, this is an opportunity to step back and get some additional policy guidance from the council that will help us to fine tune that agenda bill and then ultimately bring our proposal back to the council that hopefully will hit the mark for all of you. In terms of permit fees, there are really three buckets that we talk about. Land use permits, site work permits, which are really engineering permits, so you'll see those used interchangeably throughout this presentation, and building permits. And we're not proposing any changes to building permits, so for the purposes of tonight, that's the only place you're going to see building permits is on this slide. And they tend to cost recover and be standardized across the country. So in terms of outline, really what we're looking for is to provide you some cost recovery options. We know at your budget meeting last week, you agreed to have inserted into the budget, you'll vote on $400,000 in additional revenue related to development fees. And we want to not revisit that question, but we want to look and see if you would like to go anywhere beyond that and show you what that means in terms of percentage of cost recovery tonight. Ultimately, for those two buckets I mentioned, land use and engineering or site work permit fees, we're looking for a single percentage from you this evening. So you'll see as we go through here a chart eventually that will give you some choices. One question we knew you would have is, how do we compare to our neighboring cities? And so you can see in this slide that we, according to the fee study we did recently, were between 50 and 70 percent. We're going to give you an exact percentage tonight. I'll just tell you, it's 57 percent is where we are currently. And you can see the other cities here, cost recovering between 80 and 100 percent with varying fee methods. Some time and materials, in other words, tracking every last piece of work and every last material that's used in the permitting process, and others with a flat fee as we are proposing. So with cost recovery, again, we're at 57 percent.
Charlie?
That range, yes.
I think we have a question.
Yeah. In looking over the material, it appeared to me that the 57 percent was basically the cost of doing business for a year and the amount we brought in from the fees. And it was just taking those two numbers and putting them together. Is that correct?
Yes. So what we're looking at are expenditures related to development work specifically. So in the case of development services, we have, for example, certain positions like code enforcement that don't specifically provide a lot of direct development activity. So we've backed some of that out. We've backed out some of the long-range planners, and that's how we've come up with the expenditure number, and then we've looked at direct development revenues. And comparing those two is how we've come up with a percentage of cost recovery. So looking at where we are, again, we're at 57 percent. So we're in that range that was in our fee study, 50 to 70 percent currently. Adding the $400,000 that you talked about last week brings you to 76 percent. The administration's recommendation, we'll get to this a little bit later, but it's 100 percent cost recovery. That's still our recommendation. Here's a look, a historical look at how, as I just described, those revenues and expenditures compare. And what you can see from this slide, in particular, is what we call the delta, the number running across the bottom. That's the operating loss, and you can see over time that it has gotten smaller. And you can also see in there the effect of the reorganization in terms of helping to make that delta smaller. For 2014, this is the chart that I think you'll probably spend the most time on tonight. If you want to go and have a discussion, which we're encouraging, above $400,000 in additional revenues, this chart allows you to see what different levels of additional revenue would bring you in terms of cost recovery. And at the bottom there is the 100 percent cost recovery, the administration's recommendation. So again, the discussion is, we're looking for guidance from you on a percentage, and really a dollar amount, so that we can bring a proposal back to you, back to Land and Shore, and then ultimately back to council in the month of December. That will get us to a place where we're able to increase the fees at a minimum, the $400,000 that you talked about last week. Again, our recommendation is 100 percent, just supports budget goals and aligns with our neighboring cities. And we'll be bringing this back. We're targeting Land and Shore on the 10th of December, regular council on the 16th. To meet that goal of $400,000 in additional revenue, we need to get through council by the end of the year. That's very important, or we'll start out the year behind when it comes to revenue. And so I'm going to go back, I'm going to drop back to this slide, because I think that's really the conversation we want to have with you this evening, is, do you, as a council, want to go beyond the $400,000 in revenue you talked about last week? And if so, where would you like to land? Yes.
So I wasn't one of the fortunate council members to participate in a tour meeting where this was discussed. So I'm going to need Charlie, perhaps, or maybe my colleagues on the council, a little bit more background. Now, in the packet we received includes a study from Moss Adams. And I've scanned that, and a question that comes to mind is, you know, by what method would we, what, you know, how, where would we do these changes? There's a lot of steps involved, and there's a table in particular in that study which, you know, shows actually some pretty startling numbers, elements of the process where we charge zero now, where there'd now be a fee, and where other cities don't charge fees now, we would have a fee. So I think it's important that, whereas this is an interesting conversation, you know, I think in all fairness, I'd like to spend a little bit of time understanding, you know, how we would justify these various fees in these areas. And I don't know, and if this is something that the council, you guys have talked in committee, I'd love to hear the thoughts of my colleagues on the council.
Well, what we learned is, first of all, the 100 percent cost recovery goal is 100 percent cost recovery overall. It's not per each permit. And so how that gets distributed is one interesting piece of it. The, I don't know if I could explain in a couple of sentences about how you come up, you figure out what you need to recover each year. That's a little bit more of a formula that maybe Charlie or John can explain. And then the other, the third issue that you raised was about the fees themselves and how they compare to neighboring, you know, how we go from here to there and why.
And in particular, there's something in this study called a pilot.
Yes.
And so I'd like to understand that pilot. But I mean, there's a table on page 16 of the Moss study report that has a lot of things broken out. It's titled Peer City Land Use Fee Comparison. And the various permit fees include pre-application meetings, site development permit, preliminary plat, short plat, single family, short plat, other, and so on. And, you know, I would just, I'd be very interested in some review.
So are you wanting a paragraph on why we did the study?
No.
The pilot fee study?
Yeah, so there is a, I think it's, are you proposing a pilot?
We're not.
I mean, this is a question about revenue, but I'm interested in a little bit more about what approach, how we would implement these changes as well. And then specifically, I mean, I'd just like to hear some discussion about where, in some areas where, you know, there's a, someone could pay $25 today for a sign fee, and now we're saying that could be $1,000. And, you know, those are, some of those jump off the page at me. So I'm just interested in any dialogue that my committee members have had.
Sure.
So I had concerns about the speed at which we were moving towards full cost recovery, and specifically because some of these saw, you know, huge, what I saw is huge one-year jumps. And, you know, I continue to believe that fees are better than taxes by and large, but I still have concerns about how quickly we move on this and what it does to the competitive landscape. And so I had a lot of concerns back then, and so we talked about possibly some sort of ramp over time, or saying any one particular fee wouldn't change by more than some amount. I think we talked about the idea, would we want to talk about as a full council, whether we wanted to have a policy that in any given year, any particular fee, whatever the reason, couldn't change by more than, let's call it 25 percent, right? But part of the challenge is that some of the services that are now offered don't really have a comparison to the way services were offered before DSD was reconstituted. So it's, it can be a little bit of apples to oranges, and people are paying for a higher level of surety in some cases. And the question is, how do you compare the cost when you had a, when you had a product that didn't have as much value with a product that does have more value now? So it got sort of murky, but I was very, very concerned. I still think it was right that we looked at at least partially closing this as we developed the budget that we all want to move forward with. But I'm not convinced that going straight to 100 percent right now with some of the jumps that we had to see in Vision, it seems like a little bit of a whipsaw on the development community.
Joe?
Yeah, I've got a whole bunch of concerns. Excuse me. We had a construction kaizen three months ago, which took the time from 180 hours to 90 hours or something. Because we're just taking our expenses and dividing that, or taking our revenues, dividing that by our expenses to come up with what we're showing as our 50 percent, 57 percent, there really isn't any science to this at all. The new practice is, from what I understand again, is that pre-application and coming in ahead of time, not having to have complete plans and things like that are things that make it easier for somebody to come in and develop. That also is going to mean more multiple reviews for staff to look at things. There's just all sorts of things in here that make me uncomfortable. First off, that we're not using any facts other than just what our total budget was for the year, based on a year where we weren't necessarily look at anything but single family and regency, and now all of a sudden we're lumping them all together and we're looking at what we're going to be doing for the next year that could really take a lot more time. And 100 percent recovery, to me, is a misnomer. I mean, we don't know what 100 percent recovery is because we don't know what 100 percent of the costs are. And we could say we want to get 100 percent recovery, and then October next year, we're $300,000 short. What do we do? All of a sudden bump the fees up again so we can make up the things by the end of the year? I'm just really troubled because of all the unknowns and all the things that we're in the process of changing and things like that. Is there anything that can make me feel more comfortable that we really know what we're doing? We understand that this could delay development, it could even stop development, it could send developers to other cities? Is there anything in the future to allow us to actually start looking at either time and materials, or at least the concept of time and materials, to be able to check our work and see if we're close or not close?
On the topic of time and materials, that's certainly something we have experience doing with development agreements, particularly in the Highlands and Talus. It's not something that we recommend doing going forward. And mainly, it relates to the amount of accounting involved. We've had a number of issues historically where we've got our accountants, they've got their accountants, we end up with billing disputes and other things that require significant time and effort to resolve. There's no question that time and materials is 100 percent accuracy in terms of assuming that you can agree on what the bill should be at the end of the day. Typically, what you see with cities that do flat fees, like we're proposing, is the kind of rate study that you saw from Moss Adams, and you would likely see that every year, every couple of years. Cities are more sophisticated. Some of the other cities that were mentioned is our comparables in terms of the way that they track certain things and their allocation formulas. One thing I want to point out here is that what we're proposing is 100 percent cost recovery for direct costs. We're not talking about indirect costs at this point. So that's a whole separate discussion, and that's something the Finance Department is looking, going to be looking into in the next year. So that's something we could talk about next year, but this is just direct costs. We feel fairly comfortable that these are aligned with our actual expenses at this point.
Eileen?
So I also did not have the chance to be able to sit in on any of the Land and Shore, and I guess I have a fair amount of questions also. So the table we have in the Moss Adams report here is comparing Kirkland and Redmond, and both of those are flat-rate cities. And so we are looking at comparing Issaquah to the flat-rate cities, but I don't see any comparables here as far as the Bothell and Bellevue and where they sit. And I'm just sort of taking a look at some of these numbers, and these are incredibly large increases. I mean, if we're talking about a single-family lot line adjustment from $607 to $7,610, that seems incredible. And especially when you compare it maybe with Redmond and Kirkland is $1,000. I mean, so I'm seeing some real large differences and trying to compare us with flat-rate cities, and I'm not seeing any comparable tables of cities that do time and materials as to what we would be doing, would be proposing. I don't really have a question, just some real concerns as to what I'm seeing here at this moment in time, and a real strong concern in regards to how quickly and how large or jumping, and especially comparing to some of our neighboring cities without, like I said, having that comparable with time and material cities.
Yep, Josh?
So, you know, I agree with the comments that I've heard, just in terms of ratcheting things up fairly quickly. What I guess I still don't understand, and maybe it's hard to calculate, is where that economic intersection occurs between increasing fees and depressing economic activity? At what point does an increase become too much of an increase that you're turning off, you know, potential developers or redevelopment from occurring within the city? And I don't know, in looking at these other jurisdictions, you know, where they arrived at their fee determinations. In other words, have they just had those on the books that way forever? Did they ratchet them up over a period of time? You know, what have others done in that regard? And so for me, that sort of connection of the X and Y axis is really important, you know, where that point becomes too much of a point. The other, I guess the question I have is, in terms of incentivizing development as opposed to just being a revenue source, you know, we really want to incentivize development in the central area to get that plan off the ground and rolling. Is there a way to use the restructuring of fees, not just when you're looking at it from a strict cost recovery perspective, but also to, I don't know, does it make a difference if you, say, have lower fees for something that's within the central area but not elsewhere in the city? Is somebody really going to look at that and go, oh, a site development permit that used to cost me $15,000, cost me $29,000 elsewhere in the city, but in the central area, it's only, you know, 22 or something? And, you know, does that extra few thousand dollars really make a difference? I don't know the answer to that. It may not from a developer's perspective, but is there a way to actually use the fee, what we're undergoing with these fees, as a way of being an incentive to get the central area plan moving forward? So that would be some information I'd be interested in looking at.
I would just comment briefly. For the larger-scale projects, typically fees are not a make or break kind of deal. For a very small project, maybe.
So it seems like we have two sort of basic questions. One is the percentage of cost recovery itself, and then the following question is the fees themselves. And so the first question we have is about the percentage of recovery, and that's probably what you're wanting direction on first?
Yeah.
And I'm, I mean, is there some reason that, forgetting about the fees themselves, which we've heard concerns about, is there some reason that we wouldn't move toward 100 percent, given that, you know, you do the best job that you can doing that, capturing those fees, and in terms of accuracy? Is there some reason we wouldn't do that? And I would like to hear comments from council members. Eileen?
I had a separate question, unnecessarily a comment on that one.
Okay.
As I was sort of looking down here, and as I said, I didn't have the pleasure of sitting on Land and Shore, was there ever a discussion in regards to commercial versus residential, single, you know, because I'm taking a look at what I, you know, some of the one I commented on previously about the single-family lot line adjustment from $600 to $7,000, which seems extremely excessive. But then if you're looking at some of the larger pieces, which I would have assumed to be more on the commercial end, those don't seem to be as large of increases. And perhaps that would be the area in which it is not as preventative from doing something as opposed to some of the, what seems to be, single-family issues.
So the proposed fees that are with the Moss Adams study were the initial fees, and then over a couple of months, many of the fees, I believe, changed. And I think the single-family permit fees were ratcheted way down. There were some changes made, as well as where the fees increased over either two or three years. So there were some changes. So what you're seeing here was not what ended up to be the last proposal that we saw. But that's not to say that there weren't some startling, still some startling increases.
Well, a 50 percent increase on a site development permit is far less than what I was looking at, some of these single-family home changes. So yes, that would make a big difference.
So going back to the question of the percentage of cost recovery, I think Charlie's looking for some direction on how the council feels about that. Joe?
Do any of the development agreements, do all of the development agreements meet the same fee schedule as we're looking at right now, or do they have a separate fee structure that's part of their agreement?
So development agreements typically have been at 100 percent cost recovery when they were on time and materials, and the pilot program that was mentioned is something that we looked at to try to streamline that. And we have not had a chance to say that in great detail at this point in time in terms of cost recovery percentages. But what we put together was based on averages for actual experience we have with those developments, in those development areas. So ideally, what we would love to have is consistency across the board. That would be really helpful for us in terms of administering the entire city, and I think also helping the development community understand what they're getting into when they come here to Issaquah to develop.
Okay, does that mean that the development agreements do not state anything specific about fees? They fall under the city's general fees? Or do they have special fees that were negotiated during their? Or do they have special fees that were negotiated during their?
The development agreements, Issaquah Highlands, Talus, the way they're currently set up, they specify 100% cost recovery for permits. So what we're looking at is to be more consistent with that in terms of, that's why our recommendation is to be 100%.
Okay, how about Lakeside and Rowley? Were they addressed in Lakeside and Rowley as they would have a specific fee schedule? Or is it whatever the fee schedule for the rest of the city is?
So they follow the city's fee schedule on those things, but we do have a fee agreement that we worked out with them to do the pilot test program, which is referred to in the Moss Adams study. So we did, we came up with a schedule of fees, and we had conversations with the various developers with the development agreements, and they had a willingness to try that program out, see how well the fees would work. So Moss Adams did a review of that, and that's what you're seeing in here. So what's, what was in the fee study is different than what is in Agenda Bill 6668. We, the fee study in here talked about doing the fees in two phases. Phase one would be to do a pilot program, test out the fees, determine what worked, what didn't work with that, and then come up with a new fee schedule. So that's what's in the Agenda Bill itself, is a revised fee schedule.
That answer your question?
I don't know. I mean, obviously, if there's, if the city has a different fee schedule for the development agreements, Rowley and Lakeside now, then there is nothing that says they can't negotiate a different fee schedule even if we pass this. Is that correct? The thing I'm trying to get to is, is if we have development with Rowley or with Lakeside or if we have any other development agreements, are the fees for those agreements negotiated separately? Or does the development agreement say their fees will be based on whatever the current city fees are? So that in the next year, any development that happens there, are we going to recoup at the rate we approve? Or is it going to be a rate that's already been negotiated with the development agreement?
So the story behind that, or the explanation behind that is in Talus and in Issaquah Highlands, the development agreements specify 100% cost recovery. In other development agreements, they're different. So we were able to work with the development, those developments that had agreements, because that did not require to go back to council and change the fees there. We just changed them in agreement with the development, and we came up with a fee agreement on a uniformed scale for fees that we were going to charge and said, let's try these out. Now, majority of all those fee agreements that we executed, I'm thinking around March of this year, are set to expire December 31st. When those expire, the fees will revert back to what it was before, which means in Issaquah Highlands and Talus, would we, we would revert back to a time and material basis, and in Lakeside and the Rowley development agreement, revert back to the fees schedule which was adopted by city.
Thanks.
So it would be different in different parts of the city.
The fee schedule? In other words, what we would, if we approved this next council meeting, the development agreements would have a different fee schedule than this?
If we, if the fee schedule passes this year, we would work with, to get everything changed over. I mean, to what's in the state.
It seems to me this should be a yes or no. I'm not feeling, I'm getting, I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm just wondering if they get to negotiate a fee schedule separately or if the first of the year, whatever the city's fee schedule is, is what they get. If it's a negotiation, I just want to know if it's a negotiation. If it's, it's whatever the fee schedule is, that's fine, too. I just, I'm just curious if we can get an answer of whether they get to negotiate that or whether it is whatever the city's is.
So there's two options that they can take.
Okay.
They can revert back to what they had prior to March of this year when we executed a fee agreement, or we can renegotiate a new fee schedule, which we would hope would be the same one used citywide, adopted by ordinance.
Just the who could renegotiate? I mean, we've got a bunch of different development agreements. We've got the Highlands and Talus, and I understand that's transitioning. We have three other, three or more other development agreements independent of that. I think what Joe's asking, do they follow the city's fee schedule? Or a different fee schedule that was negotiated as a part of the development agreement?
It sounds to me like they get to negotiate. The city will try to negotiate them back to whatever we adopt, but it is still a negotiation, just like they've negotiated to have the pilot program run now. And I, from the sounds of it, Talus and Highlands are a full cost recovery regardless, but the other development agreements are a negotiation. And it's just a matter of what we negotiate and who negotiates best and what.
Well, at this period of time, if the city adopts a new fee ordinance by the end of the year, that becomes the fees that are used in the city. Those would be the fees that, I believe, Lakeside and Rowley, under the fee agreement, would follow.
Yeah, okay.
So I have another way of asking, oh, sorry. So I want to address Councilmember Goodman's question about, do we want to get to 100%? I think the answer, my personal take, is yes, eventually. But like Councilmember Barber, I had real sticker shock when I saw some of these changes, and there's still, even though the, what we put out and associated with this conversation today isn't the, it sounds like isn't the current numbers, the current numbers are still, there's still sticker shock there. And so I would think that what we want to do is do a phased implementation where we get to 100% over some amount of time. That has the nice side benefit of encouraging developers who might be thinking about this year or next year. It gives them a little incentive to do it sooner rather than later. So it has kind of a double effect of being more fair than, I think, how some of us feel seeing, seeing some of the sticker shock and then providing a little incentive.
Eileen?
So Stacy, has the committee discussed that phase-in process?
Yes.
And was there a recommendation for? No, there was, you were going for?
There were concerns about, initially, concerns about it, which is one of the reasons it went to a phase-in. And then maybe three years, we didn't get to the recommendation point. We kept discussing and realized it was a big topic, and so we wanted the rest of the council to have an opportunity to weigh in. Fred?
Sort of what happened, Land and Shore started out with the discussion and recognized the complexities, and because we had substitute members of the committee come, it seemed like we always started at the same point, and it was very difficult to go forward. And, and so it became very, very obvious that the entire council needed to be involved in the discussion, and everyone needed the same level of information, because we were in this do loop that it looked like we would never get to the point where we could recommend to the council a position on this. So this is our opportunity, and from my perspective, I believe full cost recovery is where we need to work our way through and get to that point. We've already assumed that there would be an additional $400,000 in our, our additional revenue from fees. That's the first step. And with that, that gives us a 76% cost recovery percentage theoretically next year.
And is that taken into account, as we spoke earlier, in regards to some residential versus commercial?
Yes.
So the proposed $400,000 would be a 76% across the board?
Not across the board. It would, we recognize that some of the fees just, you would not pass the, you know, we're just so out of whack that it made no sense. And so there are the small folks, the medium-sized folks, and the others. So looking at, across the board and each of those fees, then there has to be a judgment on, is this something that is reasonable given the service that's provided? It doesn't all go up at the same percentage. So I would hope that we could agree that, you know, the 76% cost recovery is the right, right percent, and that we would look very closely at how we would achieve that, taking into account that it's got to be something that you can present to the public and not have a violent reaction like we sort of, well, our reaction wasn't violent.
Thank you.
But it was, this just, there's no way we can present that. And so we, we saw some examples of what the fees might be, but we're not locked in on that yet.
I just had a question, real briefly, on your comment, Fred, about the 76%. Because obviously, for this year, that makes sense in light of the number that we chose in the budget deliberations. If, however, we're doing this as a model moving forward, unless the intent is to revisit this on a yearly basis, who's to say that 76% translating to $400,000 would be the right number for 2015 or 2016? It's, you know, that would be a short-term strategy, obviously, to meet our target of $400,000. But is that the long-term strategy? Do we, do we want to look at this from the perspective of maybe a higher percentage of cost recovery gives us some room to maneuver in future years? Because otherwise, we might have to come back again in 12 months and revisit this whole process again.
I thought what you were saying is that you wanted 100% cost recovery, yes, but that maybe not all at once, and we would start off with the 76% and get us $400,000 next year, but that's not the end of this discussion.
So we would conceivably revisit this?
Well, I would think that we would get a proposal at Land and Shore that would have, if the council liked Fred's notion of the 76% next year, then the proposal would include, going forward, getting, how are we going to get it 100%? It doesn't just stop at next year.
So phasing?
Phasing.
Okay, I would prefer phasing rather than just, we'll figure it out later, because the uncertainty for, you know, developers would be inherent in not doing that upfront. So, okay, thanks.
Paul?
Thank you. So I've taken the opportunity to crunch some numbers. If we increase revenue by $400,000 to 76% cost recovery, that tells me that in aggregate, we'd be raising our fees 42%. Does that resonate with anybody in finance? Sound familiar?
It's simple. I mean, in your presentation, you forecast expenditures of $2,333,262. 76% of that would be $1.77 million and change. You're currently, I assume that in your presentation, you're forecasting revenues of 1.249, 1.2 million. Then if I just take the difference between what you forecasted plus now a new number at 76%, that's a 42% increase. So I mean, those are just the numbers that are in your presentation. So my question would be then, and I'm thinking of other, that, obviously, I think fair, we need to be behaving prudently. We need to be fulfilling, as a city, you know, I feel it's our obligation that if we're offering services and we're facilitating this development, you know, it's, as a city, we should be, we should be prudent in our fiscal model. And so, you know, and it's possible for things to be too low. It's also possible for things to be too high. So then I ask myself, so, and the question that's already been floated here, well, what does it do to, you know, what does it do if I'm a, if I owned land and I wanted to develop it and I now saw your fees, you know, would I think, well, maybe I should go, go look in Bothell, for example, because it's one of our comparison cities? So does a, what is a 40, across the board, 42% increase, where does that put us? Because in comparison, and I'd almost like, I'd really like an answer, if possible, in different types of projects. I'm not a developer. I see a list of things that people come to the city for, and I don't know if they come and get one, or based upon their project, they need this, they need that, and there's four or five or six or seven line items in their bill, and it may probably over time. So I don't know what the typical project likes, looks like, but I do know there's a seven, to go to 76% recovery means that across the board, we'd be increasing our fees 42%. Where does that put us, those new prices, put us for a typical project in comparison to other cities? And I'm not saying we have to be lower, or we have to be higher, or we have to match. I just, I said I'm not a developer, and there's probably a lot more factors that a developer would consider when I'm going to choose to develop here or not. I'm sure, and I think I heard, there's a sense that just looking at the fees generally doesn't change someone's decision. But I, but still, I think that as a percent increase, especially if somebody's been doing business here before, I want to do business, I've got, I want to do something here again, and it looks like, you know, my across-the-board fees are going up 42%. And oh, by the way, if we go to full cost recovery, they'd be going up 87% across the board.
Joe?
The comment that I would make is, is I'm not a developer, but I work with some. And right now, we're working on a development that, to pick up the permit is $100,000. So it would be, you know, another $50,000 for that permit to move forward. Whether we go to 76% or we go to 100%, the thing that we need to be real careful of is, I'm assuming that this will be phased in, those that are already working on permits, will they come under the new charges the first of the year? Or do they, is that something that just automatically goes into effect for everybody, regardless of where they are in the process? Or is that something that, I mean, I don't know how it's going to be phased in? The other thing that I would comment on is, however we decide to get from 76 or whatever we'd go to 100%, needs to be advertised greatly. Developers can look somewhat into the future, but if they're going to get hit from a 40% to an 80% in one year, that's something they need to know so that they can get things moving a little faster. Somebody who owns a large parcel of land may decide to sell the land rather than develop it, because the fees are so high. And that's, that's what may happen. The thing we want to be careful of is we don't price ourselves out of existence to begin with by going directly from with an 87% increase in one year. While that would be great to get 100% as soon as we can, even if we do it over one year, as long as we, everybody understands that's what's happening, so that they can schedule the development they're doing to fit into their timeframe and the money that goes with it, I don't see a problem with that. But I would certainly hate to say, okay, we're going to do 76 now, and sometime in the next few years, we might go to 100%, because that gives an awful lot of uncertainty for somebody who's trying to develop property. So in fairness, if we go to 76% now, which I don't think is a problem, I really think that we need to look at and advertise how we're going to get to that 100% and in what timeframe, at least somewhat in a theoretical way, so that the developers and property owners can see what they have in the future.
Paul?
So, Joe, so you're advocating that we actually set a schedule? And if it's, you know, one or two or three years, whatever, in that, so if we do an agenda bill and we change this, these fees, that that includes a schedule so that people do, okay, so this is what it is going to be in 2014, and this is what it's going to be in 2015, and this is what it's going to be in 2016, and do it. And I think that's that same thing that, I'm hearing the same concern that. And I think that's that same thing that, I'm hearing the same concern that, that Josh mentioned as well, is like this idea of phasing it in and, but actually prescribing what that phasing is. Now, I don't know what's going to happen in 2016, and I don't know what's going to happen beyond that. We want to avoid that, and we can do that in, I would think, in a single agenda bill.
But I think that would be fair, fairer for developers. If, if it's open, if it's left open with the idea that we could do whatever we wanted to, next year, we could, we could just hammer them.
That's.
And I think that if they can look out a few years and see, okay, where, how do I have to, to move to get financing, to do the development before the fees go higher, I think that's a fair way to do it. Now, obviously, there's going to be some, some cost adjustments that have to be able to be taken place. But I think as we've talked, as long as we can keep that, if we can set that to, to an administrative that if the costs have to be adjusted 10 or 20%, they can, they at least have the ability to see what the base cost is going to be and what a 10% increase would be if the city decides to do that. But then they would know what the cap is, and, and that would help them decide what year is the best year to, to go ahead with the development.
Other comments?
I do.
Paul?
So I want to elaborate on my question earlier. So I'm looking at the list that, it's page 48 of 70 of the packet, and it's page 16 of the Moss-Adams study, the pure city land use fee comparison. So, so my question was, and there's specific ones in here, pre-application meeting, site development permit, preliminary plat, and, and the list is there, I don't need to read it to you. And maybe, it'd be really good to get somebody's input, like in this meeting. Give me, put together a project for me. Which of these does someone, so we've got one, I'm sure there's projects you're considering right now. Give me a case study of which of these are likely to be incurred in a typical development of different types. We've got single-family houses, we've got duplexes, we've got, we've got a lot of different types of development. We have, you can answer that. Please, thank you.
We're thinking the Taco Time project out at 221st and 56, can you hear me?
There you go. I can, thank you.
So that's one that is a level-three site development permit that went through the Development Commission with a, with a decision. So there's three basic steps in the land use permit process. It's a pre-application meeting, followed by a community conference, and then a site development permit. So there's three basic permit steps in the land use entitlement process.
And the community meeting doesn't have a fee associated, does?
Yeah, it does.
I know, I'm not, okay.
Today, it's, yeah, I think it's going to $1,500 or so.
That's not in this table. I see it over here on Fred's one, okay.
So pre-application meeting, community conference, and site development permit. Those are the three basic fees in the site development permit process.
Okay, all right, that's helpful.
Okay.
So, and so then, did I hear you say earlier, there's, this pilot is actually looking back at something that was done in 2012?
Right.
And did I hear you say that you were, you know, we were, you know, this was, um, accepted by the developers that you worked with?
The, the developers agreed to test out these fees.
Okay.
But the current fee schedule that's in the agenda bill is not reflective of these fees because we, we modified them according to some of the findings and the results of those fees. But we also looked at ways to be more streamlined and consistent in that process. So I think the fees on page 16 are, it, to me, it sounds like it's, it's confusing to the process because they're not reflective of what we're actually looking at. What we're, what we're proposing, and I kind of want to swing back to the percentages up here, because this is a lot of the conversations that we had at the various land and shore meetings where we spent a lot of time talking about fees and not fully understanding how they work, how we're going to come up with a consistent schedule. So we felt the best thing to do would be for council to set, um, set the limits on what those fees would be based on what is the percentage of cost recovery. Then we would come back and rebuild a fee schedule that falls within the cost recovery, and it will have very specific limits. I mean, if we agreed on 400,000, you're probably not going to see fees that are reflective of what's in the Moss-Adams stor, uh, study. You're going to see fees that factor in how we get from what our current fees are as adopted by ordinance, adding $400,000, spreading that over a fee schedule, and coming up with a consistent schedule that gets us there.
Okay, thank you very much for that explanation. And if that was somewhere in this packet that I received for that meeting, I apologize. I, I didn't see that, but I find that very helpful. And I have no doubt indeed that council will be able to give you guidance along the frame that you have it here. But the material I was given's got line items, it's got fees in there. And I think just, I'm just trying to, you know, I'm going to get, I'm considering these because I want to understand the decision I'd be making, and the information like Dave gave me was pretty good. But I'm going to go back to what you said. You've worked with these developers, and, and they, and, and they gave you some feedback, you made some adjustments. I think one of the messages you want us to hear is that, that, and you use this word kind of consistency, and I think there was another adjective in there, I forget, that you used, and that this program that you modeled and tried was found to be generally acceptable to the developers that you worked with. And you're hoping that by extension, we, you know, we, we, you want the council to say, continue with that type of program, and the kind of revenues we expect you to recover like this, now go back and figure out the details. Is that, that's how you're hoping, that's how you want this to, to go?
That's how we'd like to see it play out, yes.
But, but the thing about the, you worked with others and it made sense, you're, you, you, so that's an important point that, that helped formulate your plan. You think, okay, we've come up with an approach here, we think works.
Well, what I'll say, because I don't want to put exact words into the people who signed fee agreements with us.
Sure.
They, they understood that the fee process is complex. They didn't have a basis from which to judge how well our fees were initially established in that fee agreement, but they did agree that there's value in reaching consistency in how we establish our fees plus how we come up with fees. So they were willing to say, go, we will go ahead and agree to try these fees out for a set period of time, but do a fee study to determine how well are those fees compared to other cities? And so that's what the Moss-Adams study does, is it, it takes a look at the fees and how we come about with the charges that we did, how they relate to our practices and how we, what we do differently from other cities, and then again, comparing them with other cities. And, and so they, they came up with results of that. I have not heard back from those that we have fees, fee agreements with that they, that they either approve or they disapprove of the fee study or the fees charged. But I think they would be willing to see, well, how do we move forward with the information that we have and then come up with a, a fee schedule that council's willing to accept? But, but it is difficult going through this portion to understand all those bits and pieces, and that's why we're at a workshop.
So one of the, one of the items they were getting, that they were getting away from time and materials and going to fix fees.
Which is way more predictable and forecastable. You're on the expense side.
Right, which is why they liked it. Fred?
Well, I was just going to suggest that perhaps one of the questions that we should be talking about is the period of time that we would, we would phase in in order to achieve 100% cost recovery, which is one of our financial policies that we approved fairly recently by agenda bill. And we've talked a little bit about two years, and we've talked a little bit about three years. And so, uh, I, I don't know how that translates to the, to the slide on the screen. We will be moving towards the first 76% in 2014. That's a policy direction that the council has provided. So do we want to achieve 100% in 2015? And what would that look like? Or do we want to take another year and reach 100% in 2016? And what would that look like? And is that, what, those, the, the two versus three years, is that information the council would like to see before making a decision? Or, Paul?
Oh, I was going to let you finish.
Nope, I think you're going to help me out a little bit.
Well, yeah, so what would be the drawback of not, of doing it over multiple years instead of in one? Now, I would just be sitting there, if I'm thinking about doing a project or not, and it's, here's the fees in year one, and here's the fees in year two, I might decide to hustle it up a little bit. And, 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 and I don't know if that's a good or bad thing for the city, but that's just me thinking off the top of my head. I mean, are there, what would, what would be your perspective on the drawbacks to the outcomes? What gets developed and for the, and, and the impact on the city and our ability to absorb that to do it over multiple years compared to one? Are there, have you identified impacts?
I think you raised, you know, some good points because when building codes happen and change, we always see a rush right before that so that they can beat the code changes and/or fee increases with that. So we would expect that from year to year, if, if they know when that time limit is, they will do what they can to try to bring work in. So that, that becomes an issue to factor in as we do our work. But we also, that, the issue that that creates is different fee schedules in different parts of the city. We're trying to remain with the consistency of fees throughout the city, which we feel is in line with our economic vitality and comp plan goals of developing consistency in the, in the permitting process.
Did you mean different parts of the city? Or did you mean different projects ongoing, having different fees associated with them?
Different parts of the city. So the Isequa Highlands is an example. If we went to something less than 100%, we would have to create a fee schedule for the Isequa Highlands that goes to 100% cost recovery. That does have a tendency to put us back into, without a study, maybe perhaps time and materials, which is one of the reasons why we, we do, we ran up with the pilot program because they wanted to get away from time and materials, and the same would tell us.
So we talk about phasing, and, um, so I don't hear any opposition to 100% cost recovery moving toward that because it's one of our policies, and it seems like a reasonable thing to do. I asked the question, why would we not do that? And I didn't hear anybody say otherwise. But what I am hearing, and maybe talking about phasing maybe is, one of the reasons we don't get any answers to some of the questions is because there's major concerns about, that I'm hearing, about the fees themselves. What I, what I, what I hear being asked, and I heard it from more than one, is are the, are the fees reasonable in terms of the services provided? And are the fees reasonable compared to our neighboring cities? And phasing, I think, seems fine. But one of the reasons we talk about phasing is because the fees that are being proposed are, you know, significant increase. But at the end of the day, regardless of how long it takes you to phase them in or not, the question really is about whether the fees are reasonable. And so I'm not sure how we get to answering the question about phasing because I think we're always going to get back to the question of the fees themselves. And maybe I'm off base, but I've been taking notes, and that seems to be a current theme.
So it still gets me back to my question as to where that, that, that point is. Because is 100% cost recovery, is that one league too far? You know, where, at what point do you start depressing economic development if you reach that point? I mean, that's obviously a huge difference in revenue. It's a huge difference according to the study for an individual, you know, plat. As Eileen pointed out, in the residential context, I mean, the percentage increase is tremendous. So, you know, where, where is that, that connection point? I'm less concerned about necessarily trying to reach 100% as to, on the issue of the fees themselves, whether they can be used as a, um, planning tool or a development tool in some way to either incentivize development or the certain kinds of development. So we've talked, for instance, in the Infrastructure Committee about, I think it was the fee-bait idea, you know, just providing refunds for doing the right kinds of development, the right kinds of projects, things that we want to see here in the city, or things that are providing an environmental benefit. And so, you know, if you don't get to 100% because you're actually giving a fee-bait back to the developer, I'm less concerned about that than actually seeing the right kinds of things that we want to see as a community. So those would be reasons, I guess, why 100% is not that big a deal to me. It's more about the, the types of development and the types of incentives that we can provide through this process.
Stacy?
Yeah.
Would there be a problem, I mean, so if we talked about a three-year phasing, so if we do 80% for the first year, 90% for the second year, and 100% for the third year, and then as Josh was saying, that all of a sudden, we're finding, as we're coming close to that third year, that, that there's been a concern in regards to the, the fee increase being large and, and hampering growth or hap, hap, hampering, you know, more development. Would there be the ability to come back and say, we want to just hold this for one additional year, and we'll institute this 100% on year four?
I don't know why we couldn't.
Council's call, it's a policy question.
I think Bob had some comments.
Well, you know, I was going to say a few things. One is that this is just a snapshot in time, right? So next year, it's going to be dependent on volume as well, so that may impact the percentage. You know, if we have a lot of development, we'll see more revenue. If we see a shortfall in revenue, we're not going to hit 76% because I, you know, generally, you're going to try and have the fees set up on a, on an annual basis. The other thing, I think Joe brought up an interesting point earlier, is, you know, when you look at development, they look at really kind of four major factors. One is profit, and so all the various soft cost affiliate with profit, taxes, which include mitigations, fees, whatever taxes are involved with that, improvements, so whatever improvements are going to have to be made, and then the land costs. So really, when you start to think about this from a tax policy perspective, that million dollars is still being covered. It's just a tax on everybody. It's a tax on all the homeowners, it's a tax on all the, you know, people who are paying sales tax in the community. What we're, when we start to shift the fees, what we're really doing is shifting the cost of development to the homeowner, to the land, to the landowner that actually wants to redevelop their property. So the question may be not necessarily whether development would stop or not, is what's the price that person's going to be able to get on the sale of their land to, to developer? Because a developer's got, you know, there are certain fixed costs are going to be, a profit return that they're going to be looking at. There's going to be taxes that are fixed, there's going to be certain improvements that are fixed. So the real variable then is what, you know, to make the deal, what can you purchase the land for? And so when you start to look at a million dollars over, and I was trying to get a number real quickly, but just the, you know, development that occurred up in the Highlands, that was a $90 million construction development. You know, a million dollars, if it was all just assessed to that valuation on a $90 million project, is very, very small. And so you start to look at, you know, not all fees, not all cities are created equal. So, you know, one of the things we have is location, location, location. People want to be here. And so the cost of fees is not going to have a significant impact, at least where we are, relative to some of the other communities in terms of the development that's going to happen going forward. So I think, you know, if council did want to make a step in the direction of that $400,000 number, and land and shore wanted to take a look at the distribution of fees within that, that we'll certainly be able to get into that detail. But as we start to go forward, you know, I, the, the fee piece, which is essentially a tax on land, is not going to have a real significant impact on overall development in the community.
Joe?
However, with that said, we're looking at concurrency, we're looking at updating mitigation fees, we're looking at everything that you said. So this is just one more lack of incentive to be able to come to Isequa and, and develop any property. And if it's cheaper and easier for a developer to buy land in Redmond, we've kind of put it, the citizens here that have sat on their land for 30 years to use it for retirement, we've kind of said, well, well, too bad. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of aspects of this that, that can take place with it. And I have to go back to what Josh said. Do we want to incentivize to, to, to make it easier to build here so that we can get a better economic vitality base? Or do we really want to make it, you, you come here, your developers are going to pay for development? And I, I think that's the policy question that we really need to. And I, I think that's the policy question that we really need to look at. And, and I think as we sit down here with this, I, I think we've, we've got concurrency coming up, we've got mitigation fees coming up and all of those other things. And, and if we're looking to, if we're looking to recover the costs on all of this stuff, we can't just stop here. We need to look at making sure our mitigation fees are, are covering our costs, our concurrency is actually covering our costs. And, and by the time you start putting all of that together, what's the message we're telling people? And, and it doesn't matter to me one way or the other what you're going to tell them because people are going to develop, it's, it's like water, you know, it's going to seek the level it wants to seek. If they can't afford to do it here and they can buy land cheaper someplace else, they'll go someplace else and do it. With that said, my biggest concern is most of the time when you do a fee increase, you've got six months for people to, to understand it's coming. And in this case, you're going to give them two weeks if you're lucky. And, and I know right now, we've got three developers that are developing here in town that when, when the first of the year comes and they realize halfway or a quarter away or three quarters of the way through their project, they're going to get hammered with a 40% increase in their fees, they're going to have some concerns about that because it's, it's unexpected, there's, there was no way for them to know it was coming. If they had known it was coming, they maybe could have hurried, hurried a little bit. Like John said, when you know it's coming, you can schedule for it. When you got two weeks' notice, it kind of looks like you're trying to set somebody up. And that's kind of my concern on it. I, I understand all of the circumstances and, and I'm, I'm sympathetic to that. But I, I think there will be some repercussions come back from us for that. And I, I agree, I think we need to start the cost recovery soon and I think we need to have it on a schedule. And I, I like Eileen's idea of going 80, 90, 100. And then somehow put a, an escalator in there that says if, if it changes by 10 or 20%, we can adjust that. And anything other than that needs to come back to the council so that the council can look at it and adjust it. Personally, I would rather see the, the council look at it every year for the next three years and adjust it themselves. So, the policy question can be, is 70%, 76% or 80%, is it actually affecting our economic vitality enough? We want to adjust it? Or is it, is, is things like it was 10 years ago where everybody wanted to come to Isequa and it didn't really matter what it cost, they wanted to build here? And maybe, you know, increase it a little bit more that way. But I, I think we're going to find out real quick over the first year what the impact is going to be. And I, I just hope we leave the flexibility open enough that if we decide somewhere along the line that we, we really don't want economic vitality to leave Isequa, that we have the ability to change it a little bit.
I mean, well, and I think irregardless of, of whether we do 80, 90, or one year or three years, I think one of the important pieces that I just heard Joe say was that anybody that's in the door and ready to, to, to step in, we can't all of a sudden in two weeks say, well, you're halfway through your process with us now, the next half of your process will be at this new, new formula. They would have to be able to follow through with their project to completion under the same documents and price that they had started with, or the same formula, I guess is a better way to say it.
So, the, the expenditures, the number that you came up with, the expenditures, and that's, that's just the, the personnel costs primarily. I think you said it was all direct costs, so it was there, I'm sorry?
Consultants.
And plus consultants. What's the split? It doesn't matter, but it's all funded out of the general fund? So, so the sales tax and the property tax and the BNO taxes that we collect are subsidizing the development today? We have, I'm formula, I'm almost done.
What'd you say?
Almost done. Tola was waving at me. And, and so, and then I look at the information that was provided and Bellevue, Kirkland, Bothell, Redmond, with the exception of Kirkland, they all, developers are paying for the development. I think Joe makes, I like Joe's point about two weeks' notice. But, you know, I, so I'm, I'm thinking out loud, we're not making any decisions tonight, I'm thinking out loud, but I tell you, going for, starting 100% cost recovery July 1, starting to make sense to me. And as far as concurrency, we don't know what concurrency is going to do. What we need to concurrency is align the impacts with our vision. Right now, it's fix an intersection and, and that might have nothing to do with what we're trying to achieve long-term like we specified in the, in the, so I think, I think, I think we're going to be looking for some flexibility and a better way to apply, you know, the impacts to align with, you know, what we want to achieve with our transportation infrastructure. So, I mean, I don't know, I, in my mind, I don't know if that's a given, that concurrency costs go up, but, you know, so I guess we need to see on that. So, anyway.
Tola?
Thank you, Tola.
So, again, I'm ultimately, I'm supportive of ultimately getting to 100%. In terms of in the interim, whether the taxpayers subsidize development, I, as a homeowner, have benefited from the commercial development that has occurred over the last decade in the, in the valley floor. And it allows, you know, our superb police department, it allows our great parks, it allows a lot of the things to make Isequa what it is. So, if we take a couple of years to phase it in, I don't think we are harming the community, particularly if it creates an incentive to start doing some development sooner rather than later. I think that we have to keep our eye on staying competitive, but I know that we are going to be having conversations this upcoming year on other parts of the fee structure about staying competitive. So, I, I would prefer we look, keeping the 76% that we had for this year, because we just got done coming up with a budget that we all thought we could live with, and then go to 88% the next year and go to 100% the year after. I do have a question for the administration, which is this idea that if you're already in the system, that you get to keep the fee structure you had, you know, each year I have services from ongoing organization, you know, people I work with, I mean, you know, the fees that I pay for various things, the doctors and, you know, when I have, folks I have ongoing contractual relationships with, their fees can go up each year and it, and it, and it isn't a crisis. If we phase this in, I guess my question for the administration is, is it harder to do that grandfathering? It, it seems like there, there might be a cost to doing that and trying to manage that versus having a fee structure that's the same. And it's almost like, I almost wonder if it wouldn't be better to take a slightly lower amount and keep it, the step function the same for everybody January 1st versus trying to do something that maybe is a little bit lower rate for the taxpayer but creates a weird managing challenge to manage the effort?
Yes. I think, you know, I think, I like the idea of giving notice. It's a, it's a very fair thing to do and it lets people make adjustments, whether they're in improvements or that they want to submit to the city or materials are going to use and, but then that does impact the math. So, you know, you may want to think about if the end goal's 400,000 and you shoot for July 1st date, you may want to think about a slightly higher rate that first, that starting July 1st, but at least we've given everyone notice to make some plans for that.
So, are you getting what you need?
Getting closer.
Okay, Tola.
I, I have one more nerdy question. You talked about that the flat rate is easier to manage than an hourly rate or cost within time and materials. That's actually opposite to what my experience is as a project manager because what happens is when it's time and materials, it's real straightforward, right? You just present somebody, here's the hours that were worked. When it's a flat rate, it's my contract manager versus your contract manager and who's better at defining what a change order is and what's involved in a change order and all that. So, in the private sector world, it's, it's much easier to manage a time and materials contract than it is to manage a fixed cost contract. How is, how is that different in the public sector?
I, I can tell you. It, it takes, it takes so long to do one thing, but there's, there's impacts to it. In other words, if, if you're designing a sewer system and the, the developer calls up and says, oh, we need to bring it up three feet, in his mind, that's, that's just moving a couple of lines on a computer, when actually it has an impact to where the water line is because you don't want those to interfere now. And so, when it gets all done and it turns out to be a $300 change, they go, well, wait a minute, that should have been a half-hour job, that, that should have been 50 bucks. What's, what's going on? So, that's the kind of stuff that gets into it is it's not so much, it, it's, it's, in my mind, it shouldn't take that long.
But that's an argument for time and materials, right?
Right.
Because then you just.
No, no, that's the argument against time and materials. Where, where if it's a flat rate, it doesn't matter how long it took you to move it, he's going to pay the amount no matter how many times you have to move it, or how many other lines you have to move.
Okay. So, in the private sector, when you have a fixed cost contract, if somebody wants to change where that line goes, that's a change order, right? And that change order gets negotiated because you can't just automatically ask for more stuff, right? If, if somebody's building a house and they say, and you do a flat rate for them, and they go, oh, by the way, it's going to, I'm adding four bathrooms, right? You don't get to just add four bathrooms for free.
Yeah, but it's like John had said, it, it becomes a negotiation more than it does a, a flat rate. So, no matter what you bill them, somebody's going to come back and say, you know, it should have been less. So, you're going to have a lot of staff time negotiating whether or not the time and materials was actually right or whether the time and materials is what they thought it should be.
Maybe that's different because in the private sector, you just, it is what it is, right?
Even in the private sector.
Well, we could probably argue this all, all night, but I believe we're getting close to time to move on because we have another pretty significant agenda item that we want to talk. So, Stacy, I'm not going to ask you to summarize everything, but it sounds like this is coming back to land and shore for additional discussion.
Yes.
And there's a good sense of what the concerns are and probably an indication of a path forward, although we're not in a position this evening to tell you exactly what that path forward is.
Right.
Joe?
I, I would, I would like the idea, let me just throw this out. I like the idea of waiting till July to raise it. Because of that, rather than go to the 76, go the 80% with the idea that, that someplace, probably not every year, and probably not half a year, but, but somehow raise that to 100% by 80, 90, 100, and do it over the course of three and a half years. So, that you can get from, from say July to either another six months to go to 80 and then a year to 90, or how we work it, but, but know that we're going to within three and a half years be at 100%. And then give the six months' notice so everybody has the six months that they can get their, their projects through the door and out the door at, at whatever we're doing now. And then given three years so we know, they know what's going to happen over the next three years for, so they can do their timing.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I do, I do want to say that it's, you know, we did hear concerns about the actual fees. And so, I'm, I find it hard to believe that those questions will disappear. So, as we move forward, we might want to give some consideration of those questions too.
We've taken careful notes and we have the video, so between the two of them, we'll get it all.
Okay, our next agenda item is Agenda Bill 6737, Resolution Regarding Funding Commitment to Eastside Fire and Rescue. I see Deputy Chief Tryon moving to the table and City Administrator Bob Harrison, who I believe is going to kick the discussion off. And it looks like we've got reinforcements here this evening also. Eastside Fire and Rescue Chief Lee Soptick is in the audience also, along with.
Chief Ayers.
Chief Ayers. His bodyguard. Okay, Bob, roll them.
Well, we're going to tag team again here with Deputy Chief Tryon. And as you know, there's been a lot of discussion about this lately. There was a resolution submitted to council that was giving direction to our two Eastside Fire and Rescue representatives, who were Joe Forkner and Eileen Barber, regarding a whole variety of things on the ILA. And so, one of the things, there was recently an ad hoc committee, I hope you'll be able to read this, that met and did some additional work on the, the current fee formula. And this is assuming the, if the AV formula stayed in place, which is the current formula right now, and given the 2014 budget and 2015, our costs because of the move of station, what number is the May Valley station?
78.
78, are going to go up $528,837. So, doing nothing at all, status quo, just a result of the move, slight increase in the budget, our costs are supposed to go up, that amount. This is what we're, you got a little dot thing there? All right. 5272.
The 5801.
Moving to this proposed 8515 funding with a move-up station credit, and this gets a little, little complex, so we'll kind of work through that in the next couple of slides. But the important number is right there, 5687, so 5272, 321. Our costs are going to go up to 568761. So, it's an increase of $415,300, but it's actually less than what the previous slide was by about $130,000.
$130,000.
So, the change in the formula will have an impact on what we would actually pay in 2015, a savings, resulting in a savings to the city. And given the, under the new formula, some of the details is that essentially using 2014 budget, the 2013 King County assessed valuation data and 2012, what they call CAD incidents, which is essentially the usage, within the partner boundaries and a portion of the partner shares the operational costs of the nine station service areas and would be based on what we talked about, 85% AV and 15% incidence, essentially calls for service. And the calls for service are further conditioned at a 75% fire and 25% EMS. So, why is that good for Isequa?
Because mainly calls in Isequa are EMS-related. So, the theory of this funding model is that it takes more fire engines to go to a fire than it takes aid units to go to an EMS call, so you're using more service, more units. So, that was the theory behind that.
Yep. And so, the 2013 King County AV data, the other piece that's important there is, oops, that essentially they would freeze the, the assessed valuation of 2013 and essentially it would apply to the 2015 and 2016 budgets. And then you would see an update or a variance in the 2017 budget. And why that benefits our community is that we are seeing increasing assessed valuation at a more rapid rate than essentially some of the partners that are involved. So, District 10, 38, North Bend, while they're seeing some increases in valuation, ours has been at a, at a higher ratio. And actually, you'll see as we get to a later slide, there had been an impact or something similar to that in the previous ILA before we saw this ILA and what the impact of that was at that time. And then the incident weighting would be phased in over two years. So, the first year would be what, seven and a half percent? And then the second year would be seven and a half, an additional seven and a half percent to the 15?
Correct. And the other thing that's not mentioned in this, or that's going to be the next slide, is that there's also this funding formula that says Isequa and Samamish have units that get moved up someplace else. So, the Maple Street Station that we call 72 gets moved up to North Bend quite frequently. Frequently being about 5% of their time they're actually servicing another area. Station 81, which is the Pine Lake Station in Samamish, it's the same thing, it frequently, up to about 5% of its time, gets sent to Carnation or other places. And it's those units that we're also using to offset overtime costs because we can have crew's training because we have another crew that can cover. And so, there's a reflection in this budget that says the other partners will share 25% of the cost of that Station 72, 25% of the cost of Station 81.
Okay. So, as we talked about, Station 87 is in its new location and Station 78 is in its future location. The formula would apply for the full seven years of the proposed ILA, so the renewal would. The formula would apply for the full seven years of the proposed ILA, so the renewal would take place. And then if you, as, under current ILA policy, unanimous consent would be required to change the funding formula. So one of the things that's interesting is what's happened in terms of EFER and Issaquah's contributions. And we looked at essentially 2007 to 2015, which would be the first year of that proposal. And overall, EFER's cost has increased during that timeframe twenty-two and a half percent. So base year 2007 to the proposed year 2015, so an average of two and a half percent per year. One of the things that influenced that was there was essentially a three-year freeze in the budget from 2010 to twelve, I believe it was, approximately?
Just leading to it.
Yes.
Up to 2007, there was a three-year freeze, four-year freeze in the process.
So, but during that same period of time, Issaquah's costs from 2007 to the projected 2015 went up seventy-two point nine percent. So even though EFER's costs increased an average of two and a half percent per year, the City of Issaquah's costs increased eight point one percent per year. So we're paying a greater proportion of the costs. As you can see, in 2007, the city was responsible for nineteen point nine percent of the overall budget. In 2015, we're now responsible for, we would be responsible for twenty-eight percent of that jet.
And that's based on some annexations that Issaquah was part of, i.e. South Cove came into this. But most of it is outside influences such as Bellevue annexing some of Fire District Ten's area. And as well as with the Great Recession, Fire District Ten's assessed valuation has dropped significantly, whereas Issaquah's hasn't. So Issaquah, by the form of the funding model, picks up greater shares of those shared fire stations.
So one of the questions that came out of this was station coverage, and I'd like to recover how Issaquah is covered under the station law.
So this is an Issaquah-only model, sir?
I'm sorry, before we go any further. Now, tonight, so this is good educational stuff, but tonight we're going to be discussing a resolution in support of what? I think you can do it, I'm. Could you do, could you do an introduction? So what the current resolution says, it's included in your packet, is that we are, we will, the city council is providing direction to our EFER representatives to continue to work with the EFER board and partnership on developing a new funding model. I think what we are suggesting that you modify that to, because we had talked about seventy-five, twenty-five within that, is this eighty-five, fifteen move-up formula. And the reason for that is that three of the other jurisdictions have already adopted that, and Semamish is supposed to adopt that tonight, and then District Thirty-Eight. District Ten and North Bend have adopted, but Thirty-Eight's supposed to do it, I believe, this week. So essentially, there's been some real kind of movement towards this conceptual concept of this eighty-five, fifteen with the move-up formula. So what we're, what we've, what generally has happened in the past has been the direction has been provided by council to your EFER representatives on how to vote at the board. Because the board, under the ILA, has the ability to adjust the funding formula. We don't. So what we're providing is direction to our representatives. How come the resolution doesn't mention eighty-five, fifteen? Because that wasn't at the table and the resolution got drafted and initially presented to council. So this resolution has to go back to council on next Monday. So if there's direction provided to the administration this evening, then we would make that modification to the resolution or anything else you wanted to put in the resolution at that time. But the way the resolution was structured was just pretty much telling our reps to keep trying to find a solution. Thank you.
Joe?
Eileen and I talked a little bit before the meeting, and we kind of feel that rather than adopt the resolution, which really is, it doesn't really give anything real definitive and it's kind of just real general, that if we could just get a direction in what the council feels, you know, in whether the eighty-five, fifteen sounds good, rather than adopt the resolution, it might be easier for the council to be able to move forward. Because the other stuff in the resolution, as things have moved forward since the resolution was drafted, have really kind of settled themselves out to the point that they're not really applicable anymore.
Yeah, and so there is an EFER board meeting on Thursday this week that the board could take this issue up.
So I think the board was looking for, the EFER board was looking for direction that is eighty-five, fifteen, something that the City of Issaquah is comfortable with, that's something that can be handled in the current ILA, so your directors could deal with that. And the other direction was, is that there's an ad hoc committee that was going to be formed to deal with the longer-term issues of the ILA in general. What changes would you like to see as the City Council of Issaquah happen? And those would be a process through the next three months of the first quarter of 2014 to work towards implementation by the end of the second quarter, June of 2014. So that was kind of the two directions that the Eastside Board was looking for from the city council. Yes, sir?
I mean, two things that I guess I can respond to that last point on. One would be just in the area of efficiencies and looking at ways in which Eastside Fire can have better efficiencies and whether it's, you know, things like looking at reciting Stations Seventy-One, whether it's, I don't know, looking at other things, I'm not going to give you a laundry list. But that would be one area, I think, to explore, which has a benefit amongst the whole partnership of reducing costs in general. The other would be, and I don't know if this is something to look at for the ILA, but some kind of provision that deals with what happens if things change in the next seven years. Now, that could be if a new partner joins, that could be something, I've been a proponent of the accident.
Yeah, motor vehicle accident recovery.
Yes, thank you, that, that charge, you know? And so if that's not built into the funding model, because, you know, would that be shared amongst the jurisdictions? Would the revenue from that only go to the jurisdiction where the accident occurs? Those are open questions, and, you know, if something like that were pursued, I don't see it happening this year. I don't see it happening next year, but, you know, what if it happens within the seven-year window? Is there flexibility built in so that the existing ILA can still remain effective, but you can add or alter pieces that do affect the funding of all the different partners?
Annually, up until May thirtieth, you can affect the next year's funding, and that is power given to the Board of Directors, is to make that specific change that you're suggesting. So it's flexible enough for you come up with, hey, we can do this, let's do this, spend that time to make it so, and then you can apply it to the next year's funding model. So yes, that is available.
Okay.
So Paul?
Chief? Seven years. I think I was part of a conversation once where ten was thrown out. And if I recall, you indicated you thought that that really gave you the planning horizon where you could affect efficiencies, i.e., you know, cost reduction, but more efficient delivery of the right, so right size, right cost the services provide. Seven versus ten, could you offer your perspective?
Well, we'd love to see twenty, quite honestly, because the longer that we're able to plan out, the more efficient.
So the question is, what's the right amount of years to get efficiencies as far as planning is concerned? The longer the better. We would love to have a twenty-year type of an agreement. And we may get to that someday. I think in the current environment, there's just a lot of mistrust, there's a lot of unsettled items. And so as I was watching the ad hoc committee work through all of the different elements in order to make these recommendations that you're considering, the discussion about the length of the agreement was anywhere from, I think it was three years at one point, talked about five years, I think that eventually folks got to seven. Seven seemed to be a comfortable number for folks. I don't know if it's just because that's been the tradition. Every one of our agreements to date have been seven-year renewal periods. But we would love to see longer. I just don't know that that's doable right now, current environment.
Okay, thank you.
So where are we in the presentation?
Almost to the end.
Okay, we'll bring it home.
So speaking to that long-term need, right now, your fire stations, and that's Station Seventy-two, Seventy-three in the Highlands, this is right across the street, Station Seventy-One, this is Providence Point up at the very top here. Right now, your stations are where they should be if you have your own fire department or you're in a short-term, i.e. a seven-year regional fire department. If you're talking twenty years and we start including Semamish as well, these other three stations, these six could probably get down to five stations. And we could put them in better locations so that actually our response times to some of these areas that get farther away actually even better. And that's what our goal would be, is that we could reduce a station and have better response times. But that comes with the need of knowing that you guys are going to spend capital dollars over a long period of time. That's when we would recommend to move those things.
So there's some short-term things that we need to discuss. There are probably some midterm things that we need to discuss. And there are some long-term things that we probably don't need to discuss, but we need to begin to think about. The short-term thing, and one of the big issues that we've been dealing with over the past number of months, is the funding formula. And there have been a number of proposals, and if I understand correctly now, that we are down to a proposal that would be based seventy-five percent assessed valuation, I mean eighty-five percent assessed valuation and fifteen percent calls for service and designating certain stations as step-up stations where the cost of those stations would be borne by all of the members. The resolution that is a part of our packet had, was very general, and a lot has really happened in the relatively short period of time that we've been waiting to have this discussion with the whole council so that we could provide guidance. But it looks like significant progress has been made to the benefit of Eastside Fire and Rescue and the other members, including Issaquah. And that was highlighted by the early slides that you showed up there. We are scheduled to take action on the resolution, which I believe should state that, you know, the direction is the eighty-five, fifteen and the step-up stations for those that represent Issaquah on the board, Joe Forkner and Eileen Barber. You know, that is the right direction to go. I have heard some concerns expressed about modifications to the ILA as a precondition around whether all of the members could support an eighty-five, fifteen funding model. And I'm not sure where we stand on that. And I'm not sure, I'm even aware of what proposed modifications have been discussed, are being considered. But if I understood the briefing correctly, there appears to be an agreement to have those discussions during the first quarter of 2014 so that all of the partners have an opportunity to look at and identify those things, potential modifications. And I would imagine, you know, even the length of, you know, the ILA could be a part of those discussions if the time is right. So not taking any action this evening, but looking for a head nod with respect to the funding model. My sense is that that would be the appropriate way for us to proceed until we take formal action on that Monday evening. And so I'm not seeing any heads in the negative.
Any questions, please?
Paul?
So the resolution reads, number one, therefore, the City of Issaquah representatives on EFER board are hereby directed to continue to explore and understand the impacts of making amendments to the funding formula. And then they give an example of including a seventy-five, twenty-five property evaluation and usage split. Usage, I think, are we using the word usage?
Yes, the calls.
Okay. Okay, so that specific, is that the only element of the funding formula?
With the addition, well, so you have the assessed valuation fifteen percent, or eighty-five percent. Now I'm doing it, fifteen percent for calls and that twenty-five percent for two particular stations, cost sharing, spread out of all the partners, that's what the recommended.
Okay. Okay, so maybe my question wasn't clear.
No, there's some other components of that also.
Correct.
And the other components are that assessed valuation is at the 2013 level until, put that slide back up there. There you go.
Going quick.
And also that the calls for service are broken out, the twenty-five, I mean, the fifteen percent is seventy-five percent fire and twenty-five percent EMS. So there's the whole.
All the terms of funding.
Mm-hmm.
There's nothing else there. These are the basis of the funding.
This is all funding formula, right there. Those two slides discuss the funding formula.
So I, okay, so I did not see any negative head nods.
So Fred, what do you, I'm not sure what you're trying to achieve. Are we trying to give, Joe asked for something. We came here with my understanding that we were going to discuss this and then, for consideration, action at our next business meeting.
We are.
Now, are we trying to give direction in terms of head nods prior to the board meeting this week?
Well, so to modify the resolution and so that our representatives know what that, what the revised resolution would look like for Monday night.
So these last two slides are what your Board of Directors can do on behalf of the City of Issaquah now inside the ILA. Anything else beyond that, beyond that funding model, this, it needs to come back to the city to approval because now you're changing the interlocal agreement itself.
And so that's the stuff on the previous slide.
These two things are the things that the ILA, the interlocal agreement, allow you to change annually.
Right.
And that's the direction that your Board of Directors are requesting.
These two things?
The funding formula, the two slides, I'm sorry, we've got two slides here, unfortunately not on one slide.
So our representatives are empowered to change the formula under the current ILA. Now, there was a, there was a whole list, and Semamish had provided theirs, but they didn't even include some of the other thoughts, I think, in that list that would impact the fully, you know, the actually adopted ILA. And so that's the piece, because the ILA is still going to expire, so we actually have to adopt that unless there's an automatic renewal provision. Right, so if there are some amendments.
Well, that was going to be my next question. I thought that this, it's expiring, we're negotiating a replacement ILA. But you talked, but this, this meeting on this Thursday isn't about the replacement.
No.
It's about 2014?
It's about the funding model for 2015, actually. So the idea is that.
The term of the replacement.
Correct. So at the end of January, this coming January, nobody does anything different, the ILA automatically renews.
Got it, got it.
And the thing we're trying to change is the funding model, which is allowed to be done annually.
And so Fred, I still want to get what you want to do, but I do have one more question. How similar are the resolutions already adopted by North Bend and Thirty-Eight, is it? How similar are the resolutions already adopted by North Bend and 38, is it?
Very similar. Basically, they adopt the funding model as printed out this way, as well as directing that an ad hoc committee be formed to study and recommend changes to the ILA to be done by the end of first quarter 2014, with action by the EFOR board by the end of second quarter.
Okay, and so, and so this is the second round of resolution that Districts 10 and 38 and North Bend had done, right? And if I...
Certainly, North Bend had created a different one, yeah, now is...
Right, and I think I'd heard that there was a concern that they were too different, and so did each of these partners, this latest step, actually move toward a common resolution? Because I think that was...
Correct.
To address a real concern I heard expressed, that they were too different, but now they're not.
Correct. They've adopted what the ad hoc committee, the five...
Okay.
Partners, single person on that group, came up as a recommendation.
Okay.
They've adopted them directly.
And that's reflected in our...
Correct. Yes, yes. That was, and what you just saw was the funding model. You didn't see what the recommendations for the ad hoc committee, which was basically to study it and make recommendations at the end of March of 2014, to be acted on at the end of June 2014.
Okay, so, so in your opinion, from all the partners' perspective, the action that, the action that we're planning at our next meeting, assuming we're still going to do that, is, is it, in your opinion, is it enough?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's enough, from what we're hearing now, for all five partners. That still remains to be seen, because you can change your mind between now and Monday, and our understanding is the City of Samamish is making their decision tonight. We believe that they're accepting this exact direction.
All right, thank you, Greg.
And I was just going to say, really, you know, the board is empowered to make, you know, they can set up an ad hoc committee if they want to do that. They can give it a timeline. So, you know, they can choose to do that. There's no real significant impact that comes back to, that you're making tonight to the ILA. Now, there will be a report back, I'm sure, from your representatives that will eventually come to whatever those suggested changes are.
And I do have the recommended motion here for the ILA, if you wanted to read through that, or, I mean, it's just a...
And this is what you're going to consider on Thursday? And it's in alignment with what the other partners have already, I'm seeing some nods, have already passed?
Yeah.
Okay.
There is another aspect of the resolution that I think Josh touched on it a little bit, and it is paragraph three of the resolution that talks about continue to engage in discussions with the partners on the board for a solution that is fair and equitable for all partners and that focuses on providing optimum services at the most efficient cost. Now, it's not very, I mean, that, who would argue with something like that? But there have been, as we've gone through, over the past several months or so, a number of ideas that have emerged. And so I would just like to, and this is not a complete list, Josh mentioned charging for accident response on I-90 or other highways. There have been discussions around a different type of service or tailoring service for the needs, and some very general discussion around, are we serving the Providence Point residents, you know, in the best way? There have been concerns that we saw up there, some slides on cost increases over the length of Eastside Fire and Rescue, and some thoughts, are we as lean and mean and is our overhead what it ought to be? Are there other efficiencies that could be gained by partnering with the jurisdiction and members to provide some of the services at lesser cost? And then we saw the service area and the number of stations that you need, or perhaps, you know, a reduction in a station. And so all of these things are, are these potential topics that would be discussed during the, looking at the ILA, or is there another mechanism that could be used? Because I know some have thought that perhaps an independent consultant could come in that worked for the board to look at the EFNR organization, and are there more efficiencies that could be, that, is there a better way of doing it? Are we organized the way that we should be? How would we, how would we move some of the ideas that I've just mentioned here forward to be a part of the discussion?
Well, one of the directions that the, some of those other partners have made, which is that ad hoc committee, that's literally what their topics are.
Okay.
They have, they have needs that they felt that they haven't had a chance to have addressed in Eastside Fire and Rescue. That's the direction they want to go. Some of that still focuses on what's the best governance model that then would allow you to focus on, which you brought up, which is those longer-term cost efficiencies and effectiveness. So, the chicken and the egg type thing, what is the most appropriate thing to allow you to make those changes in the future that you see necessary? And thankfully, I can make a comment about the City of Samamish, they've routinely done fire studies to find, you know, different ways to do things, and so we've actually had outside consultants routinely evaluate Eastside Fire and Rescue, and not by our direction from outside, and we get positive feedback on how we are doing things, which means that we should probably be paying attention to what we still can fix.
Okay, I might comment on that a little bit later, but Tola?
I have a question, just looking at these totals. How come, so Samamish has, their total assessed value, property assessed value is about $8.4 billion, ours is about $5.8 billion. How come we spend, we cost, fire service costs us as much as it costs them? Or how come theirs doesn't cost more, I guess is a different way to put it.
So, one way to look at this, and make sure that I'm going to answer your question correctly here, is that Samamish pays for their three stations, they pay almost 100% of two stations and 60% of one station. In Issaquah, you're actually spreading that same cost over four or five stations of service. So you have less individual ownership of some stations or cost associated to it. So Samamish is having to pay more of the costs of their own fire stations, and you're getting, and have had, until these last couple of years where District 10's assessed valuation has dropped so much, you've been having lots of sharing of those fire stations.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that answers my question. It seems like if they have 45% more total assessed value, that you would see that reflected in their share, more or less, of firefighting costs. And let me predicate that. I'm all for us paying our fair share, and, you know, we've had this in conversations on PSAPS, you know, regionally, we've had this conversation on a lot of things. I'm for us paying our fair share. I see, I see a value to us, you know, having it be mostly assessed value, but, you know, incidents cost money and that's very to do, but I'm just trying to understand that number because it seems funny to me.
So, each fire station is a cost center, and I'll use your station, Station 71 on Sunset here. 55% of the area that it protects, 55% of that assessed valuation is in the City of Issaquah. So you pay 55% of Station 71's cost. That assessed valuation could be $1 billion or $10 billion, it doesn't matter, in this response area, because what we know is that fire station costs $2.2 million to run, and roughly almost 90% of that is salaries and benefits and people type of thing.
So it's capped on the cost, station cost?
Correct. That's exactly it. It's not, and that's kind of one of the discussions that you've hit on, is Samamish, that it's not fair, because it isn't really about how much assessed valuation, it's the percentage of the assessed valuation that that fire station protects.
Well, it seems like when you put it all together, they should be pretty happy with this model. If you compare, if you based on assessed value, they should be feeling like this is a pretty good model.
There was a neighboring fire department chief who was telling them, I would love to be able to have three fire stations for what I'm having to pay for two fire stations, and that was what his response was, so.
And along those same lines, if I may, I noticed in the Samamish 2014 budget, they have an interesting metric there that their per capita cost for fire service has gone down, from their previous budget cycle to their current budget cycle. So, kudos to people managing the costs for Samamish. Their costs have gone down per capita, and I think that's a pretty good metric. It'd be something interesting for us to track as well.
Okay. Other questions or comments on this topic? Paul?
One more?
Of course.
So, I'm going to direct my attention to Eileen and Joe. You have action on...
Thursday.
Thursday. I know, I think this is where you were going earlier, Fred, right? So, is there anything else that this council can do to assist you for your participation on Thursday?
No, I think we are comfortable with the...
Direction.
The direction that we've heard on both of the two items, on the funding and the ILA. I think we're comfortable.
Well, go forth and do great things. Any, is there anyone in the audience? Oh. Paul?
Pardon me if I used up all my tokens.
You've got, this is your last one.
Well, so this isn't related to this activity that's coming up. I think I heard you say that Bellevue did an annexation. Something left EFOR?
Yes. Actually left Fire District 10.
Some, some of the territory that they recovered.
The Lakemont Orchard area, yes.
So that left Fire District 10?
Correct.
But that didn't change the cost for EFOR to operate a single station?
No.
So...
Change our costs.
Right.
Correct. Yes, because you took more, because of that same model, where you had roughly an 80-20 split, now it's a 90-10 split that you own of the Maple Street station. You pay on.
Oh, I get it. I get it. And I can't wait to see the good work from our ad hoc committee to address these issues. Thank you.
Okay. Call for public comment now. Is there anyone in the audience desiring to comment? Anyone desiring to comment? Seeing no one, then I believe, unless there are any other questions or any other business, we are adjourned.